Mobile City Council Tuesday, May the 28th. Please stand for our invocation led by Public Safety Chaplain Bobby Morton and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, as we come before you this morning, we thank you for this day that you have created for us. And we just thank you for this opportunity to come together to discuss the business of the city. And Lord, in your word, you tell us that if we like wisdom, to seek that wisdom and knowledge and discernment. And Lord, we come before you this morning seeking that knowledge and wisdom and discernment, Lord, and exactly how to handle this business according to your will. And this morning, Lord, we come to you just with open hearts, asking that you just give us a sensitivity to your Holy Spirit as we deal with the issues this morning. And that we deal with it in a way that is honoring and pleasing to you. And we just thank you that we can call upon you and know that you care so much for us and care for this city. We ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Any person that is designed to address the council must sign in indicating the ordinance, resolution, public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is designed to speak to the council on another agenda item must contact the City Clerk's office no later than two o'clock p.m. the third prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified pertaining to the City of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper notice to the City Clerk's office and wishes to talk or speak on another agenda item would not be allowed to do so. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell was sounded to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summer rising. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there has to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements ought to be made to the chair. And that being, I'm right here, I really don't need a microphone to hear you, so you don't have to holler. But all statements ought to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there shall not be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of May 21st.
Second.
Then properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk?
Communications from the mayor's office.
Yeah, Council President, the mayor will be late in attendance. He's in the meeting. He's been tied up, and so I bring greetings from the mayor. But there, I'll be making some comments on his behalf. There's some changes coming to City of Mobile's Office of Resilience and Sustainability, as we bid farewell to Chief Resilience Officer Casey Callaway. And so Casey, can you just stand up for us? So when Casey joined the administration in 2021, Mobile was the first city in Alabama with a dedicated office for resilience. Since then, she has worked with the city departments and community partners to implement new programs and initiatives focused on resilience, litter, recycling, homelessness, emergency management, and more. Casey is departing to become the Director of Operations and Member Services for Southeast Sustainability Directors Network, which supports more than 120 local governments with sustainability and resilience leadership like herself. I appreciate, and the mayor appreciates, Casey's great work with us here at the city. In moving forward, Lance Slater, would you stand up? Lance Slater, who has been a project manager for the City of Mobile for more than three years, will serve as the Director of Resilience and Sustainability. One of his first tasks will be working with community members, stakeholders, other local agencies to implement a resilience plan for the City of Mobile. We are also working with the Community of Mobile Incorporated, a nonprofit organization and railroad representatives to reshape and transform the underpass site at Old Shell Road from one of the detractions to one of an attraction. The transformation will include new landscaping, hardscape retaining walls, green plantings, new sidewalks, sprinkler system, LED lighting, and power washing of the stained concrete support pillars. The city contributed $250,000, thanks to Corey Penn from the CIP. And the organization itself raised $292,000. We appreciate Louis Beville for all he has done to drive this effort. Work starts on June the 3rd. And Celia, Celia Sapp, can I get you to come to the podium, please? So Celia is retiring as the Deputy Director of Finance. She's been with the city for 16 years. Celia has been an indispensable member of the mayor's team, administrative team. She has a wealth of institutional knowledge within the financial and the city budgeting process. She has helped steer the department through tough times after the sudden loss of Paul West a few years back. And Celia is steady, reliable, and poised and professional. She keeps us all in check, and I know her colleagues will greatly miss her, as will I and the mayor as well. We will personally miss her dearly. Thank you, Celia, for your commitment to the City of Mobile, your service over these past 16 years. We are a better city because of you. And I have a certificate that I'll present. It's a certificate of recognition for Celia Sapp. Hereby officially recognize her retirement from the Finance Department after over 16 years dedicated service to the City of Mobile. We applaud Celia for her many dedicated years as the Deputy Director of Finance. Her extensive knowledge of the city's budget has proven invaluable, and we wish her the very best in her retirement. Done this 28th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2024, and in the 322nd year of the founding of the City of Mobile, signed Mayor Sandy Stimson.
I'm not much of a public speaker, but I just wanted to say it has been an honor to serve the last 16 years with each of you and those that have gone before us. And I know that the team is going to keep us on the straight and narrow as we go forth. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to say congratulations. I actually thought you'd been here longer than 16 years because you're such a pro, you know? You know, when Chief has stated, well, when you had stated that you're not such a public speaker, you know, those are the ones that get work done. And even the past finance directors we have had in the past, I know they always rely on you, and that because you are so quiet, you get things done by working quietly and working hard for the City of Mobile. So I would like to say, you know, congratulations on your retirement and do what you can do that's in your life.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
I'd also like to wish Ms. Sapp a great retirement, well deserved. When you look at where the city was in terms of its financial condition 10 years ago and where it is today, it's just an absolutely remarkable change. There are a lot of people that had their hands in it, but you certainly had your hand in it also. And thank you for everything you've done over the last 10 years, the last 16 years for the City of Mobile.
Thank you, y'all. Mr. President.
Vice President.
I want to add my thanks as well, Celia. You have been such a tremendous help to me personally with the job that we do. And just, you know, we hate to see you go. I know I tried to talk you into staying a little bit longer and didn't work, but just thank you for all that you have done for the city, for the council, for all of us, and for this tremendous job that you have done. And we congratulate you and wish you the best on all that you do going forward.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. President. Mr. Penn and Mr. Carroll, thank you. Ms. Sapp, thank you so much for your service, everything you provided to City of Mobile, and also anytime I had a question, you was able to answer it. So thank you so much. Enjoy.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Celia, I was brand new when I came in. I think that was been about 16 years ago. And let me say to you, there is a lot to be said about trust and loyalty. And when an individual can be trusted as you can and is loyal to the position and to the city and to the effort which it takes to make things go, you got to honor that. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Thank you for digging me out of the hole and keeping me out of trouble in towns. But there's so much to be said about those two words, and you embody those in the job that you perform with the city. Thank you for being here. Look forward to seeing you around town.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Ms. City Clerk.
Celia, I'd just like to say to you, thank you so very much for all of your assistance and all of your help that you provided to the City Clerk's office. It's been a pleasure working with you all these many years. It does seem like it's more than 16 years.
Well, I was in public accounting for 26 years before I came to work for the city, and it has been my pleasure to work with each of you. Thank you so much.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Reynolds.
It has been an absolute joy to work with Celia for my short time here on the council and you. She's always got a great ability to sort of dumb things down to my level and explain things in a way that I can really understand it. She doesn't lead off with no, that's not her style. It's okay, let's establish an understanding and let's figure it out. And I regret that I'm not going to be able to continue to work with you since you've retired for the city, but I want to congratulate you on a job well done.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. President, while we are speaking about-
About this, about Casey, yeah.
Yeah. You know, Casey took a real risk in coming to the city. She gave up her longtime position with Mobile Baykeeper and everything she was doing with Baykeeper to start something that was brand new, had never been tried here in Mobile or around the state for that matter. So thank you, Casey, for all that you have done. It has been a whirlwind since you came on board, and you have made a tremendous difference in the short time that you have been here. Just thank you and good luck with everything you're doing. Talk about taking a risk. You are really stepping out there, but I know if anyone can do it, it's you. So congratulations.
I'd like to also pick it back behind Vice President, you know, to Ms. Callaway. You know, I have known you for several years, even before you started working with the city because of Mobile Baykeeper. I appreciate all the work that you do for the community and for the City of Mobile. Too many people like you, and if we have more people like you, I would say it'd be a better place to live, work, and play. So again, thank you so much for all the work you have done for the City of Mobile.
Mr. President. Yeah, Mr. Penn.
Ms. Callaway, I want to join in with my colleagues. Thank you so much. You helped me with some projects, of course, in my district. Anytime I call about any questions, you was able to assist me and guide me in the right direction. And so we thank you for your service. And anything that I can do to assist you on your journey, just let me know. Thank you.
Mr. President.
And Mr. Reynolds.
Casey, we have big plans. You and I have sat down on many occasions and discussed these big plans that we have. I hope Lance is going to pick up where we left off and carry the torch, but the river folks, you know, are losing a tremendous asset for the City of Mobile. I hope in this new role, it sounds like it sort of goes hand in hand that you continue to carry forward these big plans that we have just at a more elevated level of participation. So great job, and a job well done. It's been a pleasure to work with you, and I look forward to continue to work with you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mostly Finance Reports.
Celia, are you sure you don't want to give the final report of your tenure? And I can't express enough appreciation I have for what Celia has done for me in my short term being here, but what she's done for the city has been phenomenal, and her efforts in that cannot be understated or overstated. Anyway, so with that being said, according to Celia, we're in pretty good shape right now. And for the month of April, our revenues were about a million and a half above budget. Year to date, we're about 14 million ahead. Most of that is a breakdown of property tax, which is running 2.4 million ahead. Business licenses are 5.7 million ahead. And interest payments or interest earned on money and deposits is about 2.2. So 10 million of that is coming from those three categories and where we're ahead. Expenses are under budget, so we're running at about a rate of, year to date, we're at $48 million net positive.
I'm going to ask the audience to please cease your talking and, of course, their comments from the council. Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Then properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A generous adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for waiver of the noise ordinance on June the 1st on Clemente Court, June 7th at Moffett Roads, Suite 1, July the 8th on Spring Hill Avenue, and September 14th in Newhouse Park.
So move.
Second.
They're probably moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sorry about that. The request for June 7th on Moffett Road would like to call that one out separately.
Oh, okay.
And, Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Penn.
We have received calls about this, this particular waiver. I had asked multiple times, tried to allow this to take place from a standpoint of working with the owner to make sure that we can make sure that we can have, working with the neighbors, so they can follow the guidelines. I spoke with the owner and expressed my concerns that we are following the ordinance that the music can't obtain obscene language or profanity is prohibited. And so what I'm requesting is till the owners agree to all the things that the ordinance state, then we should not move forward with this waiver. Now, after that is agreed upon, then we can move forward.
Mr. President, on the same waiver on the June 7th on Moffett Road, this is in Mr. Penn's district, but the majority of the neighbors, one in particular, live in my district, so I get the complaints as well and have been getting complaints for quite some time. We've even had the police go out there a number of times. So I certainly agree with Mr. Penn. We need to make sure that if they want to play music, they do it in accordance to city ordinances, and perhaps the frequency that they are asking for these waivers may not necessarily be something that we want to continue to consider going forward.
Another discussion. My favor? All opposed? Bill passes, Madam Clerk?
So June 7th on Moffett Road, Suite 1.
To table?
Second.
Then properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Out on the table.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to declare the structure at 2257 Clinton Street, 20, I'll do these separate, 2257 Clinton Street, public nuisance in order to demolish.
This opened the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, by coming down to the podium, by giving us your name. Again, this opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. If not, particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to declare the structure at 2017 Selman Avenue, a public nuisance in order to demolish.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, by coming down to the podium, stating your name. Anyone present? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to declare the structure at 557 Dolphin Island Parkway, a public nuisance in order to demolish.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? You may come down to the podium by stating your name.
My name is Talissa Rayout.
It's a little bit louder.
My name is Talissa Rayout.
Yes, ma'am.
To tell you that we already replaced the roof on the house and did all the- The structure that needed to be repaired, and I have receipts. I have the receipts and permission to do everything I needed to do.
Speak a little bit closer to the mic, yeah.
Okay, I have all the receipts and things to show that, you know, all the proper documents to show and to show that I've taken care of everything you asked to take care of to keep the property in order.
Mr. Carroll, do you want to speak on this?
Well, first of all, let me say thank you for doing the work and trying to make sure the property was structured right. The questions to ask is, did you get a permit to do the work?
Yes, sir.
So you did have a building permit? It was registered with the city? Mr. Dockenbaugh knew all that it was done and everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't see him, but I'm sorry. David, you aware of this work being done?
David Dockenbaugh, correct, Minister of Enforcement? No, my footage on any paperwork being done, we still have roof issues, extra wall issues. Now, and you're Ms. Rayout? Yes. She had the tax interest, and if she would get a permit to repair, I'd like to see it because we can step back and let her finish if she has a permit and she's working. That's, I don't have records of it.
She said she had a permit.
Is it possible that we table this 30 days so we can-
Is that a permit?
I have a permit here that's issued, yes.
What's the date on it?
5/3 of 2024. So that's probably something I don't have a record of at this point.
Let's just table it all together if she's got a permit and done the work. All right.
Oh, David is on.
557, yeah, 557 Dolphin Island Parkway.
Okay. All right. Thank you all ladies. We're going, no, we're going to go ahead and just go ahead and continue doing the work. Mr. Carroll, you want to?
No, you can go ahead.
Yeah, just go ahead and continue doing the work. We're going to go ahead and table this item, so you don't have to worry about the city. Just continue and go ahead and do your work and everything. All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Don't stop. You heard Mr. Carroll, don't stop. Make sure you make all the, just because we're tabling it, and if you stop and don't do all the work, then this comes back. So complete the project.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you all so much. Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on this particular public hearing? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to declare the structure at 1053 Rotterdam Street, a public nuisance in order to demolish.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to declare the structure at 5671 Bob Street, a public nuisance in order to demolish.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to fix costs for demolition of structure at 1107 and 1109 Spring Hill Avenue, formerly known as 1111 Spring Hill Avenue.
Read both of them together.
Public hearing to fix costs for demolition of structure at 1111 Spring Hill Avenue, formerly known as 1110 Oak Street.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item?
Mr. President, I did-
I'm Mr. Carroll.
I did get a call from the attorney for this property. They were asking for a short layover to make sure that they were correct in which properties were being assessed and which ones were theirs. David, it was my opinion that with just fixing costs, they can figure out which one is theirs after the fact. Is that not correct? Work's already been done.
Yes, Mr. Carroll, the work has already been done. This is a fixed cost resolution. If you want to hold it over so that the applicant can look at what we have submitted, we've also submitted to the council the information that we spoke about before and the federal, I'm sorry, not the federal, the circuit court decision that split the properties. They would like to take a look based on the new legal descriptions versus the previous ones, be more than happy to.
Attorney just wants to know which one's theirs or which one's not. Of fixing the cost doesn't change anything as far as ownership and who's getting assessed what costs. I mean, which buildings, what cost belonged to which structure, still belong to those structures, correct?
Normally, I would agree with you 100%. However, the decision separated the properties, and now there's, previously there was one owner, now there's two owners, two separate properties, and both have costs associated with demolition.
So I should give them two weeks?
Oh, whichever you prefer, two weeks, 30 days, your choice.
All right, let's give them 30 days.
Anyone else present that would like to address the council on this particular public hearing? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Marcus Mitchell.
Good morning, council members. My name is Marcus Mitchell. I'm the Public Relations Officer for Mobile Public Library. I'm here with the library director, Ms. Marjorie Calhoun, and our U Services Manager, Ms. Cheryl Rhodes. If you look before you, you have a blue folder, which has some items that I'd like for you to look at. Shows some things that have been going on at Mobile Public Library. Want to make sure you and everyone in your district is aware. We're going to talk about an upcoming kickoff we have coming up Saturday.
I want to briefly address the council and just say thank you to the mayor, thank you to the council, thank you for the support you provide to Mobile Public Library. It enables us to have nice buildings, money for services and collections, and we appreciate everything you've done. Over half a million dollars worth of work was done to the main library starting last summer. That building has been there since 1928, and so we do want to preserve it. We're getting a new chiller and a new control system at Ben May. We're looking forward to doing that because the equipment there now is 19 years old, and we're also looking forward to getting the roof replaced at the Tomerville branch. It's 20 years old. So you've done a great job of providing for Mobile Public Library, and like I said, it enables us to inform, inspire, and entertain, and so we want to thank you.
Mission of Mobile Public Library is to support literacy and to connect our community. One way that we do this each year is with a summer library celebration, and we start the celebration with a big kickoff party. Our kickoff party will be this coming Saturday, June 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, and I'd love to invite you to come and to sign up for their summer reading challenge. Reading has been shown to help to, during the summer with our families, can help to- and I'd love to invite you to come and to sign up for their summer reading challenge. Reading has been shown to help to, during the summer with our families can help to stop the summer slide for our community, and reading has been shown to lower anxiety and stress, and we would love for all ages, children, teens, and adults to come to the kickoff party or to any Mobile Public Library location to sign up.
The last thing I would like to say, Ms. Gregory, is that we did put two new stops for the Bookmobile in your district. We were trying to serve the newly annexed area. So there's a stop at, uh, Bernard Malco Boys and Girls Club, and there should be a stop at the Volunteers of America on Ziegler Boulevard. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
I want to thank the, the Mobile Public Library for all the support that you give to our young people. Of course, I was excited to support the initiative at the Tomerville branch with the new roof on last week that we voted. Uh, my kids love it. They go on a regular basis. Um, and we just thank you, uh, for being in the community and in our city.
And I also like to thank y'all for your hard work, and also I thank Ms. Williams. She's the representative for District Three. I think she served as the treasurer on that board. But I appreciate y'all so much, and also Ms. Williams. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Sabrina Mass.
Let me see how bipolar I can get today. Sabrina Mass. You know, it's a shame that you start classifying people now. When you give my medical records, let me know. I'll tell you my doctor's name.
Stay on topic, Ms. Mass.
Yeah, I, I signed up for this and y'all didn't approve it.
Signed up.
I signed up for it. I got my screenshot. Y'all didn't approve it.
Stay on topic.
I'm, I'm gonna say what I gotta say. Don't attack me, because you did attack me last week, all three of y'all. I don't appreciate it.
Stay on topic, Ms. Mass.
I'm gonna stay on the topic, because stay on the topic whenever. Y'all stay on the topic and stop attacking people.
I might ask you one more time, Ms. Mass.
Okay.
Please stay on topic.
The sixteen-year-old, let's talk about that. Don't you ever sit there and say, and insinuate, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the police, the police and the sixteen-year-old. Don't ever insinuate that me or anybody else is not concerned about any life. I am a veteran nurse. You know how many lives I have saved? I have children, grandchildren. I don't have to get up and have no poster board about everything, something happens, and it's my American right to choose and pick what I talk about, when I talk about it. But don't ever insinuate that I don't care about any life. And you know what's so sad? I even care about y'all's life, no matter what I say, because I'm a praying person. You know, this stuff is really hurting me. Y'all think I'm playing a game?
Ms. Mass, stay on topic.
No, no, no. Come on, councilman.
I'm, I'm.
Come on, councilman.
I'm gonna ask you one more time.
We talking about the police. The police are humans. All of us are humans. This has gotten out of control. And yes, I said what I said about Kenyon Brown on the record. Let me put it right now. Because I thought that I could trust Kenyon Brown, because I thought I knew Kenyon Brown, but that was before I did not know that he was sitting on nonprofits, Project Thrives, and all this other stuff. I have a right to retract anything that I say. Everyone does. See, I keep telling y'all, this is not about just Chief Prime. This is about what's right and what's wrong, and we are, as the citizens, are trying to get to the truth of what's happening with the police. What's happening with the city council? What's happening with the administration? Why do I have any right to even hate anybody? I don't know y'all like that. I'm just a political person doing my political and civic deeds and civic needs for the community.
Stay on topic, Ms. Mass.
I'm trying to stay on topic. But you know, when you do stuff and it hurts, y'all hurt me, and then I turn back around and I'm gonna hurt you too, because that's human.
Don't threaten us, Ms. Mass. And I'm gonna ask you one more time. Next time I have to sit you down.
No, you can't, you can't sit me down. Now you can ask.
You can have, you can have a seat, Ms. Mass.
No, no, I can't have a seat. I got my three minutes. That's my right. And I will say this, stop targeting people. Don't target the police. Don't target the police. When I sit down, I'm a three minute.
Rena Chappa.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, we are in a situation where every day, as council members, you know, we can get called out about anything, and that's the right of the people. But we have the right to respond to any situation and circumstance. And I stand by my statement. I didn't disrespect anyone. I stated the facts that we need to talk about. The statement was that the whole report was trash. So my response was, it was parts in the res, in the report that talked about statements dealing with the sixteen-year-old with policies and procedures. The report was done for, for policies and procedures. So when you said the statement was trash, I responded to, we had a six-year-old, we had a Jawan Dallas family, that statements, what happened after that, what was said. You can't say something, the whole thing was trash, when certain things could have been factual. So I stayed on the, on, on the tack. I wasn't attacking you. I was talking about the statement. I was staying on the folk, on focus on what was said. Now, regarding respect, when I left out this chamber, I was yelled at. I never yell at anymore. While I was talking, people got out and left. I never do that. We saying that we praying and we believe in Jesus and all these different type of things, then we should follow those guidelines. That's all I'm saying. If we gonna say we believe in these things, let's live it in every aspect. And I have the right to state what I feel, and I'm gonna continue the statement. Thank you, Mr. President.
Commander Clerk.
Rena Chappa. Renee Chappa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Renee Chappa. Red, yellow, black, and white, we are all precious in this site. All lives do matter. But I'm gonna stay on focus, and we're here. I know why I'm here. It's because of the investigation. Thank you, District Four. Thank you, District Six, for picking up what somebody said, the hot potato. I understand it's a lot. But I want, I don't want the investigation to be limited. I understand you got certain protocols that you got to get, get to. But I don't want you, how can I say this, meddling into, let it, let it be what they need to look at and see. Uh, for instance, if they need to find out what the ninety-two thousand for the three twenty-one Z insights, uh, that Kevin Levy wrote the report, what, what did we pay for that when it was just a, uh, peer review? And why has his office been cleared out? Is he, has he gone AWOL? What's going on with that? Uh, I would like for this administration to prove that the chief went AWOL or was in some boarding. Let's prove that. Um, I just want it to be a transparent and keep pushing for a transparent investigation. Um, I'm hoping that District Six and District Four, that you are the hope that will bring the light to the end of the tunnel. Uh, because I and more other citizens do not see a reason why the chief is not still in his position. Uh, until we done investigation first. It just seems like we put the, uh, cart before the horse there. Uh, so let's, let's keep it transparent. Let's don't limit the investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commander Clerk.
Carolina De, Dallas. James Jackson, Jr.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
James L. Jackson, Jr. Enter not in the path of the wicked and go not in the way of evil men. Proverbs four fourteen. I'm here to ask the city council to ask the city administration, why did Chief of Staff Barbara tell MPD Chief Prime to be complicit with the, the Jawan Dallas autopsy? But before you ask that question, I'm gonna read a story from the Land Yuck. Title of the story is Power Struggle, and I'll be reading the passage, the passage that says, boy, I drew the line. In an interview with the Land Yuck, Prime said, issues with the city began, begun, began two and a half years ago due to Barbara's desire to control the police department from afar. We are simply be, uh, because of a power struggle. We are here simply because of a power struggle. In large part, Chief of Staff Barbara refuses to re, 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 uh, oh, control over the intelligence, uh, center of the Mobile Police Department. Prime said, he realized it was not going to control, they were not gonna control me in a way of making all these decisions in the police department on his behalf. While there were various problems dating back to shortly after his tenure as police chief began in two thousand twenty-two, Prime said the catalyst in escalating tensions with the official stems from an effort by Barbara and other officials to release the autopsy of Ju, Jawan Dallas, a thirty-six-year-old Theodore man who died after police deployed a stun gun on him multiple times in July, uh, of two thousand twenty-three. According to Prime, Barbara wanted to leak the autopsy to an unnamed media outlet, but wanted Prime along as a second source. Barbara allegedly told Prime, he had done similar things in years past under previous police chiefs like Lawrence Bautista to change the public narrative around certain controversial situations such as the Dallas incident. Prime refused citing possible ethical and criminal implications if he was relieved, if he was revealed to a, to be a source. Land Yuck reached out to Bautista for comment on this story, but these requests were not returned by the time of publication. Following, following his refusal to go along with the leaking, uh, Dallas's autopsy, Prime said he was contacted by Barbara who alleged, uh, alleged there was gonna be a vote of no confidence against the chief by the Mobile City Council. Prime accused Barbara's wife of texting Prime's wife to tell her about the vote. Can I have one minute?
If I can. If I get, uh, two, two votes. Yeah, go ahead. Can I get one more?
A wife of Texas and Prime's wife.
Hold, 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 Mr. Jackson. Can I get one more? You wanna give me that second, second one? Doesn't sound like it. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, time is five.
Well, um, could you ask that, ask that question? Ask that question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President.
Go, Mr. Carroll.
J, I mean, J four. James, I'm sorry. About to call you J forty-five. I'm sorry. Just to, um, answer what I think your question is going to be, the four sections of the scope and the resolution, uh, allow, or I should say, one of the four sections in the scope of the resolution addresses, uh, the process of authority and chain of command and how things work. Uh, that section, uh, can allow for the questioning if there was something that was done wrong. Now, we don't know if, or we cannot say if the Chief of Staff or the mayor or, uh, the city attorney or someone talking to members of the police department is inappropriate or it is wrong. So that is why the investigation has to be as objective as possible. Because whenever you have a chain of command from the mayor down dealing with administrative issues, then you always have the ability for those in the higher positions to talk to those in the lower positions or to ask or to direct, or to, to direct the head of that department to do something. So right now, all we can do is answer this question, is did they do something inappropriate or was something done wrong in the chain of command, and that's what we're looking for in the investigation.
Yeah, and I also do agree, Mr. Jackson, and one reason the council is pretty much silent with this right now because of pending lawsuits. And I'll use one of these pending lawsuits, you know, very limited that we would say because of pending lawsuits and everything. But I do agree with everything that Mr. Carroll has stated, Mr. Jackson.
You're, you're absolutely correct in asking or wanting to ask any question like that, that you would like to. And you're absolutely correct in asking this council, is this council willing to ask those questions? But I think within the scope that we are asking that, those questions also.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Commander Clerk.
Alex Lofton.
Mr. Loft, oh, sorry.
Good morning, council, uh, administration. My name is Alex Jerome Lofton, the second. I'm here to speak today about the lack of activities surrounding the troubling revelations in the King of Brown, Kenyon Brown report. Before I, I, I start, I want to commend Councilman Corey Penn for his leadership, and then what I see is the sole voice of reason when it comes to a lot of these matters. While we waste time and resources trying to investigate about what money was spent, by who and what, and why this person was fired, we're losing lives in the community. But most of these are black lives, so we know when it comes to policing, especially in this city, black lives do not matter. Uh, which the Kenyon Brown report made evident, when it pointed out the fact that the portion of actual paperwork to do these no-not warrants that addresses potential family members in the home was blacked out. Meaning it's not even up for consideration whether there'll be other lives lost when we put bombs at people's doors and kick them in. Not even on the phone. So we know it don't matter because it's not even up for consideration. So, and then on that same token, we got we got police have killed two black men in no-not warrants last year, and neither one of these was the intended target of the actual warrant. So we know why these things happen. And this very community is already reconvening these very no-not warrants without even addressing this issue. So we know black lives do not matter, because everything's gonna keep going on as usual. And, uh, I only got three minutes, so, um, so I gotta pivot. Um, I'm an advocate for the Jawan Dallas family, and I, I want to speak to, uh, uh, some of the inaccuracies within that report. By all intents and purposes, you know, that report wrote defense. It did, it said just enough to, uh, point out some stuff that's going on within the community, but not enough to indict the actual partner.
Counsel, uh, do I have anyone who understand, Mr. uh, Lofton, I asked you to me, one minute. I give. I give. Alright, two more minutes.
So I'm not a lawyer, but you know, I've been going down a rabbit hole doing my research about this. McCabe versus Edgar was a decision decided just in two thousand twenty-three that states that you do not have to show your ID to a law enforcement. You can ask any one of these lawyers in here, and I, I'm even ask the city attorney. That is the law. The law can ask you three questions. Whether he thinks you did a crime or not, what's your name, your address, and what you doing in this area? Whether you want to engage him and help him with his investigation, it's solely upon you. The fact that the Juan Dallas was pulled up out of his car because he didn't produce an ID that he didn't have in the first place, that he wasn't legally had to show this officer and beat and tase to death. Beat and tase to death, because our officers are not properly trained.
And, and Mr. Lofton, uh, thank you so much for coming down, and, uh, I'm going to say I'm glad that you did come down today. Uh, and the reason I'm glad that you came down today for people can really hear about the, this Kenyon Brown report. I do, uh, respectfully disagree when you say a black lives doesn't matter. I do, uh, respectfully disagree when you say if black lives doesn't matter. Uh, when that last, um, young man that had got killed, uh, went up to the mayor's office and, uh, pretty much and sat down with him and the city attorney and saying, you know, we got to do something. You know, uh, this is happening too much in eight months, we, we got to do something. And so that's how the Kenya Brown name came up as far as in checking policies and procedures. Now, this other stuff about his opinions and all of that stuff, I didn't know anything he was gonna bring that. What I was trying to check to make sure that Mobile, Alabama was, was in the right of doing everything they need to do following policy and procedure of the Mobile Police Department. And then when, um, the mayor did agree at that particular time, uh, Mr. Woods had brought up, uh, one person that was familiar with this area was Mr. Brown. Um, it was something that I have brought up. And again, was totally focused on policies and procedures. Because my thing about it, you know, is it worth, you know, kicking somebody the door down five o'clock in the morning for some weed? You know, you know, was it worth, you know, you know, mess with someone that's mental ill? You know, what are the policies and procedures? Are we doing what in other states, uh, you know, you know, cities are doing and everything? So that's the reason why I said that I respectfully, you know, disagree with you. Because that's how the Kenya Brown or Mr. Brown had came about with me asking, hey, we need a third party to come in, just like we're doing this other investigation. We need a third party to come in and look, you know, and examine the policies and procedures. Now, there's other stuff about, I did not know he was gonna go into detail about all the cases and all this, you know, those opinions and anything like that. But I do appreciate you coming down, Mr. Lofton.
Now, I will say one thing, I commend the, the administration, the mayor for the moratorium he put on the, the no knock warrants and the Kenya during the Kenya Brown report itself. But when you get to a point when you have glaring inconsistencies and, and, and things, troubling things are stated, and you go on with business as usual, then it kind of leaves distrust within the community.
Yeah, and, and again, Mr. Lofton, not to cut you off, you know, uh, respect you a lot. But we did not go on with business as usual. Because again, wasn't for a Kenya Brown, um, report, you know, some of the council meeting in the last couple of weeks would have been much shorter.
Do we have a new form that addresses family in the home when we do no knock warrants?
Yeah.
At the very least, that should be mandatory.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. Thank you so much. Mr. Penn?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Lofton, for coming. I do want to, um, address those two incidents was pre-done, uh, raised, no, it wasn't no knock. Um, and the, um, pre-done rate, even though the ordinance then passed, um, the policies and procedures with the MPD police did change. So now, uh, Mr. Lofton, the, the ordinance that I did present, it then passed as a ordinance, but the Mobile Police Department did change their policies and adopted the ordinance that I had in place that I presented. So that has changed. Um, and I think, um, and that was a major step for the police department to do that, to adopt those, um, changes. Uh, but I wanted it as a ordinance because, um, leadership does change. And, um, if we had it in the ordinance, it doesn't matter if leadership changed, that would be the law. So, but thank you so much for coming.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lofton. Madam Clerk?
Cedric Miles.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Miles.
Cedric Miles.
Drop your mic, Mr. Miles.
Can you hear me better now?
Just drop it down.
What about now? Okay, um, and from December fifteenth to February first, first, United, I'm not United States, Mobile, uh, Police Department had a survey on their website about, it was actually called the Citizen Satisfaction Survey. Is, we're now almost to June the first. So it's been almost four months since the survey has closed. I have a few questions, uh, just about three questions, and those questions are how many people participated in the survey? Um, what were the results of the survey? And when will the survey be available to the public, if it's gonna be available to the public? Because we haven't heard anything about it since, and it wasn't widely, uh, publicized, I don't think it was. I think I saw it because I was looking at the, uh, city council meeting on the, uh, one, one day and it was maybe mentioned in that meeting. And one other time, I think I saw it at like six o'clock in the morning while the news was on. And I'm sure not many people are looking at the news at six o'clock in the morning like I am. So, uh, I just wanted to know when would we, uh, hear the results of the survey?
I'm, uh, defer to over to the administration.
Yeah, Council President, the, um, Mobile Police Department is a nationally accredited organization. And so because of that, they have to do these citizen satisfaction surveys. I believe it's complete and, um, we'll, as I said in pre-council, we'll be glad to pull that and distribute it.
Okay.
Basically, I think this is something that the public should know because we got, we have a lot of controversy within the police department right now.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, that's why I'm trying to come up with Mr., uh, Mr. Miles. I'm trying to think about do we need a public safety committee meeting? Or do we just need to, uh, really just release this? Just put on it. Because, and this will be on the website.
Sure.
When, when can they be on the website?
Well, I'll get Mr. Lasky, he's checking on it now, so we'll try to get y'all copies of the survey, but we'll certainly publish it.
Uh, Mr. Lasky?
Definitely by the end of the week, um, and I'll probably get hard copies to you guys this afternoon.
Okay. You heard him, Mr. Miles?
Yeah, I heard it, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miles. Yeah, thank you so much.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Carroll and Mr. Penn. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First, let me recommend, uh, 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 make a recommendation that we, uh, advertise it just like we would anything else. Um, one, a lot of people don't have access to media, internet and all those things. A lot of times when we post something on the website, it's hard to find. Uh, and I can account that because I'm constantly looking for stuff on, on our, on our own website. Uh, secondly, I think that we need to have a venue or something where we publicly disseminate this information to the public. So if there's any questions that can be asked or they can submit questions to us and we can answer them on the spot, it'll be of a public record out there where we're answering questions to be clear for everybody. Uh, I think, uh, there's a lot of concern about what's happening and people just want to know and be comfortable with every answer that they get. So let's not just put it up there for them to read and make their own assumptions. Let's make sure we get the information out and get it out right.
Uh, Mr. Penn?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Miles, for coming down and, um, requesting that information. Um, it just made me think about, um, I was reading over the policies and procedures uh, with the MPD police officers and, um, it state that we also supposed to receive an annual use of force. Um, have we, um, have, have that been, um, put out this year? The annual?
They should have completed the review of, um, last year.
Last year, yeah.
And then on, it's a biannual study done internally, um, but some of the information is public.
Okay, can we get, can I get a copy of that?
Sure.
For the last three years? All right.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Miles. Madam Clerk?
Estella Trotter.
Uh, I don't see her.
Lori Hunter.
Greetings, good morning. Mr. President, three weeks ago, oh, I'm Lori Hunter. Um, three weeks ago, I came before the council regarding the rancid corruption of Mobile Housing Authority. At that time, you promised to schedule a meeting with Ms. Trotter and myself regarding the matter. Yet to date, we have not heard from you. So again, I must sound the alarm. In two thousand twenty-one, the agency was placed under a recovery agreement due to its failing status. An agreement that charged the city with absolute oversight authority over Mobile Housing's compliance with said agreement. The recovery agreements determinations cited that Mobile Housing Authority's board, executive director and management staff lacked the necessary understanding of HUD regulations regarding the housing program they signed on to manage. The determinations were evidenced by the poor physical conditions of the properties caused by deficit and deferred maintenance and Mobile Housing's lack of inadequate policies, procedures and internal controls which are critical to sustaining a manageable organizational structure. In other words, Mobile Housing Authority is a hot mess of waste, fraud and abuse. For example, since Michael Pierce was hired in two thousand nineteen, the residents have been denied accountability and access to our tenant participation fund. Funds provided by HUD to operate our resident councils. And to be clear, we are talking about thousands and thousands of dollars a year. So what do you think happened when inquiring minds wanted to know where's the money? Well, for Joyce Freeman, a former resident commissioner, she fled under mental duress after being ganged up on and harassed by Michael Pierce, the board and their, and Teresa Bettis, the executive director of our local housing, fair housing agency. Oh, and then there's Estella Trotter, the president of the resident council, Thomas James. Or she was until she wasn't. Michael Pierce saw to the destruction of that resident council. And then there's me, the current VP of my resident council, a council that Pierce thinks he has successfully taken over to take down. He is mistaken, of course. To date, Mobile Housing is fair to come, has failed to come into compliance of any sort. When Pastor Pierce falsely states that the agency is near recovery, he is being deceptive. Something narcissistic sociopaths do well. So again, I am requesting the council for an FBI investigation into financial crimes and to notify Deputy Secretary Taria Hud for remedial action.
Yeah, Ms. Hunter, thank you so much for coming down. Um, I agreed to have a committee meeting, uh, not just a meeting with the two of you all, again, but thank you so much for coming right down again. Not just a meeting with you and Ms. Trotter, but we supposed to have a committee meeting. And we had several hot topics that had came up that we kept on pushing the meeting back, um, again. Uh, we supposed to had it to, today, um, at one o'clock. But we had another hot item that had, we have a discussion that's coming up that we needed to be discussed on today for, um, possible agenda item in the next couple of weeks. But, uh, the person, Mr. Penn, that I
Yeah, so we'll have, uh, we'll have a meeting in June. We had, uh, uh, I know you had requested change because we had another, um, situation that popped up. Um, so we'll have that date set and sent out today.
But we had, did announce that date several times, um, uh.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Where do we rank on priority? Because people's lives are being ruined.
Yes, ma'am, and I
People's health is in jeopardy and has been.
Yes, ma'am.
And we want to know where's our money?
Yes, ma'am, and again, the Mobile Housing Board have their own board. You know, just like
And again, you guys have authority to make sure they are in compliance under the recovery agreement. Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir, you are mistaken.
Ms. Ms. Hunter.
Have you seen the recovery agreement?
Ms. Hunter.
Have you read the recovery agreement?
Ms. Hunter. Yeah. This council does not have any control over the Mobile Housing Board. And matter of fact, Councilman, uh, Carroll and myself have been called bullied. You and Ms. Trotter and the rest of them, y'all not the only ones that have been disrespected.
I have never disrespected
No, I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about the person that you said that
Why is that relevant?
Because I'm trying to tell you that we also have been disrespected also.
Why is that relevant?
That's okay. In other part, thank you, Ms. Hunter. What are you asking us to do?
I did, I, I, I've been clearly
Just be plain.
I want you to do your job, I want the city to do their job under the recovery agreement.
We have no authority.
We don't have no authority over that.
The city does.
No, we don't.
I have a copy of it.
No, we don't.
Okay. All right.
Just share with our attorney. If you want to talk to both attorneys and
Share with your attorney?
Share with our attorney. Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
When are y'all gonna meet with the residents?
Ma'am, we're gonna have a committee.
We're at the center of the center.
Yeah.
President?
Mr. Penn, Mr. Penn stated that he was gonna do a committee meeting, he will announce in a couple of weeks. But that's all the thing we're gonna talk about there.
When are you gonna meet with the residents?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a point of order in our rules where it states there shall be no dialogue between the person addressing the council and an individual council member.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Hunter.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. President? I do want to give you some clarity. Um, so what you just stated is absolutely correct with, with respect to the recovery agreement. The council nor the city has any direct authority over the housing board. The recovery agreement specifically states that, yeah, oversight to the extent possible by the law. The only interaction that we have is the appointment of the board members. There is no removal provision in the statute, appointment of board members and then dealing with uh, property maintenance issues in the way we deal with anybody else's property. We're dealing with both of those things, but you're right. The council, the city has no other investigative or any kind of top-down authority dealing with the housing board. They have a separate board that is largely independent once they're appointed. And so there, there's not a lot, uh, to Mr. Carroll's question, that we would be able to do when somebody's asking. A meeting is fine, but I just want to state on the record that you are correct. That there's little or nothing that we can do as far as those other issues.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Woods.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Carroll?
Questioning to the administration, there was a bond presented to the Mobile Housing Board about housing infractions and neglect to properties. Uh, were those issues cleared up?
They're, they're not cleared up, they're still ongoing. Um, I would tell you, some of them have been rectified, but not all of them have been cleared. So that is, that is that second tier I was talking about, the enforcement issue. And that is something that we're pressing on going forward. But I understand that y'all know as, as well as the public knows, that is a slow enough process.
Uh, they were scheduled to go to court if I remember right, is that not correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay, so under nuisance abatement, they only have so much time to make those corrections. Uh, how much time do we have to give or that beyond that time required?
Certain properties are, it's, it's not, it's not holistic in, in one, so some of them are, some of them aren't. But I can tell you, some of them are slated for demolition, possible sale, just like any other resident or entity. We listen and work with them going forward, but we're not taking our foot off the pedal when it comes to enforcement.
Uh, I'm more concerned about properties that have people living in them, have those conditions been corrected?
Some have, some have not. I, it's, once again, there's no one holistic answer that I can just give you. Some have, some haven't.
Nuisance abatement falls under us, does it not?
Say again?
Nuisance abatement falls under us, correct?
It can, if it's public nuisance, public nuisance. But we're not talking about, it's two separate things. You're talking about code issues for the inhabited properties. Our large focus, our primary focus has been on the uninhabited properties. And then, of course, dealing with the properties that are inhabited, those are two separate categories. But remember, those from enforcement's standpoint, that is not, that is not giving a directive to the housing board or its members or its employees.
Uh, if individuals are unsafe, then we do have a responsibility. Let me draw everybody's attention back to, um, two fifty-nine, two sixty-one and two sixty-three Broad Street, uh, when it came to inappropriate living code infractions and nuisance property with individuals living in it. I believe the city sent every department to those, every department in the city to those three properties to enforce, uh, a code and livability issues. When they were found not to have been met, the city, uh, closed the buildings down and had the inhabit, had the landlord move the inhabitants to an inhabitable place. Uh, if you do not remember those. Uh, do we need to do the same thing for the housing board if they haven't met their requirement or their obligations to nuisance abatement?
So we, you don't get to do that, and let me, let's not talk about that one because we lost that.
Uh, we lost what? The properties are still closed right now, so we didn't lose it. So I don't understand, can we not follow the same procedure in facilities that they're claiming are inappropriate?
It, well, it depends, it, it absolutely depends. Let me tell you this, okay? Let me tell you this, you can't just move people out of there. You can't just move people out of their homes, all right? They have a process. The housing board has a process that we don't affect, right? We don't affect. What we can do is give the citations and then deal with that accordingly. We can do those things, and those are the things that we are doing. Those are the things that we're dealing with on the court enforcement side, but we can't just move people out of their homes.
Mr. Woods, I think you got it wrong. I'm not saying that we move anyone. I'm saying that if the facilities are found unlivable or the codes are not correct, then it's the housing board's responsibility to put them somewhere that the facilities are livable and correct the problems that aren't right. I would not dare move anybody if they were happy in their home. That's not our intent here. But I'm just simply asking, can we not go through the same procedure on a facility if the facility is inappropriate and have the right code enforcement people go over there? And if we have to shut it down if the work hadn't been done? Now, I'm hoping that, I'm correcting the sentence, I'm hoping that Mr. Pierce is doing everything he can to make sure that everything is correct and livable, because I'm pretty sure he doesn't want anybody to be living in bad conditions, at least I hope that is the case. But do we not have the same responsibility on those properties as we do in the other properties in the street? I mentioned last week, we can't treat one group one way and the other group another way. Everybody gotta be on the same accord, whether it's housing board or regular houses in the city and regular landlords. The city hired an individual to inspect landlord properties, I believe we did, on that, for this very same reason. So we gotta hold both sides accountable. Either we hold the housing board and the regular people accountable, we don't hold nobody accountable. So I'm asking again, can we not do the same thing?
So that's what we are doing. That's what we are doing. But what I'm telling you is, it's a two-tier process. It's not the same. And we're not trying to treat anyone differently, but what I'm telling you is, it's a two-tier process. There is a different process when you're dealing with federal housing versus when you're dealing with something that's private-owned. There's a different process when we're dealing with somebody who has occupied a facility versus an unoccupied facility. So we're doing everything under the law that we're allowed to do, pushing forward with the properties that we have inspected.
One last statement to that court, and I appreciate that statement, but let us remember that if every one in this city, whether they live in a mansion, affordable house, market-rate house, attainable housing, or the projects, we still represent everybody out there, and we need to represent their requests at the same time. Even if our governmental arm does not reach into the department directly, we have a responsibility to represent their request and their causes. So let's remember that when we talk about two-step processes. We owe them whatever steps necessary to protect the way that they're living, the same way that we do anyone else.
That is correct. That's 100% correct.
Also, I would like to ask the administration to give us an update on the situation with the city filing the housing board. From my understanding, I believe one time they didn't even come to court. So when Mr. Penn rescheduled that meeting, again, it's a public meeting. When Mr. Penn rescheduled a meeting, I will see if we can get updates on those fines.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Penn?
We have June 11 at 1:00 PM.
June 11 at 1:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And before I begin, I want to join, excuse me, with the others seated here before me and congratulating Ms. Callaway and Deputy Director of SAB and taking steps in a new direction in their lives, whether through some new form of promotion or retirement. I've had opportunity to work with each of them, and I wish them well in their endeavors. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill arrives today to initiate a conversation on anger stemmed from the items I signed up to address, fitness for duty, and City-Mobile Parks and Recreation Department. For sake of clarity, it is absolutely okay for us to be angry, regardless of what you believe or believe in. Anger simply boils down to two questions, what for and what to do with it. We'll begin with parks and rep. While certain efforts are yet to be acknowledged, I am totally grateful that this year our pool shall be properly operated. Still, the core remains with charging a fee for residents of Mobile, Alabama to utilize our recreation facilities and community centers. This ultimately segregates certain citizens from desire of timely access to public space funded by taxpayers. Mobillians demand that an ordinance be put in place prohibiting every summer camp which charges for participation from preventing any citizen of Mobile do access to public property for any intended reason. Fitness for duty. Anger is a delicate thing, so when it is positioned in the wrong place, the consequences are often detrimental and sometimes even fatal. How we are currently dealing with the city department heads, as examined earlier as our most recent committee meeting of the whole this morning, Chair will be speaking, is absurd. Two supporting examples make this all too clear. Number one, Juwan Dallas, and number two, abusive surveillance practices. Before a deeper dive into that, let's also remember, legal representation at this level has insisted on city business concerns being placed in writing, yet their own gesture reflects citizens' full names inserted in formal city documents to be deemed as typos, stating on the record, as we've even heard this morning, that specific applications will be treated absolutely the same, whether petition on paper or by word of mouth. And of course, we know them withholding resources legally approved in writing in the past. Thus, by true warrant, doubt of fitness for duty is relevant. Walking back remarks, arguing one way, then voting another, or justifying being absent to go and learn what you should have already had a plan to do, once deciding to pursue public office, for time's sake, must be left to another day, yet still necessitates a holistic assessment of fitness for duty. Mobillians demand any such contract only be approved once designed to determine the fitness of all municipal public officials, just as with the medical and military arenas. Simply put, don't charge children and their families to access public property during the summer, and don't approve any fitness-for-duty contract unless it shall assess municipal public officials as well. I hope that we will have more time to discuss these investigations. We know this is up for a vote today, but we saw from this morning, there's not a lot of clarity on that either, but we'll have to save for another time.
James Williams regarding Resolution 6473.
Morning.
My name is James Williams. My friends call me JW. In an effort to eliminate political bias regarding Mr. Pram's situation, I would recommend that someone be appointed, or either a group or individual be appointed outside of the state of Alabama. The political situation here, as we all know, is at a point where that's the only way we could get this situation properly resolved without any undue conflicts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Johnna Rogers, 256 North Jackson Street. I'm on the executive board for DeTonte Square Neighborhood. I have a question for you. I'm not here in opposition of anything for a change. Just came to my attention and to the board members, the property on Clayburn near Callaway School, is it a done deal? Have you sold or donated that property yet? It seemed to me in some documents that I received this morning that it may be a done deal. If it is not, I beg you to table it until we can get information that we've not been readily available as to what's going there, why this particular group is getting it. We're not against affordable housing, but we're always trying to be very careful what happens in our neighborhood to protect the property values and the investments that the citizens do have. So my question to you is, could I please get information on what is planned for that? And then we can look at it and have a meaningful discussion and maybe be in support of it with you, maybe give some relevant advice that we see that could benefit all of the residents? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Mr. President, I think, I think it's at least one more speaker in here today that's gonna speak to this, so I'll wait and make comments after the speakers make other comments.
Mark Minnert regarding 88-036.
How do you do? Mark Minnert, I live at 312 North Joakim Street. I am the president of DeTonte Square, and with John in touch base on, you know, we basically on Friday read a news article that a linear block of our neighborhood is either being donated or sold and being developed. We've given no notice of it, and all we're really asking for is just some time so we can get a little bit more information about this project, you know? We're not a big neighborhood, so a complete linear block is a, that's a big portion of our neighborhood, and have that developed without any input from the neighborhood or really any notification to the residents that live there. We're just asking for time because we really want to get behind a project, you know? We're for development in downtown. All of us have lived there for a period of time and understand and support ongoing developments in downtown. We just want to know more details about this one before this ship has sailed and it has time has passed to where we can have any meaningful input in the development of this project. Council President?
Mr. Carroll addressed that.
John and Mark, I appreciate y'all coming down. I didn't know y'all were coming today at all, but I always appreciate you coming down. I asked a question this morning, and that was, was this property asked to be purchased? And I was told that the developer asked to purchase the property. So that's one. It wasn't given away. Secondly, it hasn't been given away at all yet. The first thing that has to happen is that it has to be deemed no longer needed for municipal purposes by the council, and then the council is the only body that can actually sell or release municipal property to an individual. So no, it's not a done deal yet. Are we favorable towards the sale for affordable housing? Yes. Does it have market-rate housing in there? Also, yes. So it's not just gonna be affordable housing, from what I understand. But I need you guys to remember that DeTonte Square is a protected neighborhood under the historic, under its historic character. It falls under the ARB. So any developments on any property still have to go through all of the processes of the ARB. I think they may even have to go through the CRC, but I'm looking at the boundaries. No, they don't. But they still have to go through all of the processes that they would inside of a historic district to make sure that they meet mass scale, form, and architectural class and everything else. You may get a smaller house here, you know, it may be 1,000 or 1,800 square feet, and then you may get a larger house right next to it, mixed in. So you'll know all of those things as they go through the process of development and design of the project itself as it starts. So I don't know if their plan's already drawn. I haven't seen them myself. I just got this Thursday, last minute, like everyone else did. But the actual sale of the land hasn't sold yet. It may, the resolution may go through next week because it automatically lays over one week by council. Okay? So if you have any questions between now and then, please get them to me. I'll get them to everybody else. Be glad to get those answered for you. But as of right now, I don't think they're actually architectural going to the properties, yeah.
Ma'am?
Ask.
Just talk.
Ask.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we're just, and I appreciate that, and that was one, probably our biggest question was, would it be subject to the ARB rules? You know, of course, we're a historic neighborhood. We hope that. And really, we're just looking for a source of not necessarily even just the development information, but, you know, how this process takes place, where from, I guess, some transparency from how does a developer go in, make an offer on this property, all the way up to the point that we're at now? Is there any way, I mean, is there any source material or anything, any data like that that we can put our fingers on, that I can show my neighborhood and say, this was the process that took place? Or...
I can't answer that question because I asked the same one this morning. Show me a trail of how the request was made to purchase the property. I wasn't told how that process was done. I wasn't told how the individual made the request for purchase. I don't know if the city put out a request to sell. I don't know if there was anything, a bid allowed for property out there. I don't know how this was done. So I asked that question this morning. Hopefully, we'll have answers. When I get them, I'll send them out to everybody else.
Mr. President?
Ron.
It'd be easiest just to ask the administration if they could provide all that information to Mr. Minnert, who's in charge of his entire organization. He's the president of it.
Yes.
Yes. So...
Okay. Should I just get in touch? I have your secretary's email. Just email her directly or...
Send the questions to me as quick as you can. I'll send them over to be answered because I'm pretty sure you're gonna have a slew of them.
Yeah. Come on, Jamie.
Yeah, Mr. Roberts, he can ask some more questions that you may also have.
Just talk to him.
Does he go down the street or do you step aside or...
Yeah, he can.
Uh, it may be better because you're gonna have a whole lot more questions than you did right there. So it may be better that if you and Johnna get with Jamie outside and talk for however long y'all need to.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is held over 64... Oh, Mr. Carroll, did you have any? Did you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Ordinance is held over 64-034. Consider modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 145, 151, 176, 195, 350, and 400 Dunlap Drive.
So moved.
Second. And properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
34-035. Ordinance to amend Chapter 34, licenses and taxation of the Mobile City Code.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Ronald.
I've got an offer of replacement here. There was an error in this with the rate going from .002090, and it was changed into So the amended version just reflects the same rate. So that's an amendment. It's on file with the clerk's office.
Second.
And properly moving second on amendment, in the discussion on amendment.
Just for clarity, Mr. President, 209 is the correct multiplier. That's the amendment?
Yes, correct. 2090 to 2090.
Another discussion on amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to original discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
CIP resolutions held over 09-455. Transfer funds from Capital Project Greenway Trail to Grant Fund Greenway Trail.
So moved.
Second.
And properly moving second in the discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Since we're discussing this, I just want to draw your attention to another item, 31-499, which is authorizing the mayor to apply for a grant. I've been told that 31-499 is a companion piece to this one, so when that comes up, I want to ask to waive the rules on 31-499 so we can do them both today.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over 01-457. Authorized agreement with Community of Mobile for CIP O'Shea Road Overpass. 01-458. Amend agreement with First Transit for management of wave transit. 08-459. 460, 461, 462, 463, 464, and 465. Our approved purchase orders to AutoNation Ford, Dana Safety Supply, Gray Bar Electric Company, Gulf Coast Truck and Equipment Company, Sandsome Equipment Company, Sunbelt Fire Inc., and Truck Equipment Sales. 21-466. Authorized contract with John G. Watson Construction Company for Western Bayfront resurfacing. 21-467. Twenty-one four sixty-seven. Authorized contract with Courtney Knoll McCully to provide psychological and fitness for duty evaluations. Thirty-seven four sixty-eight. Consider the application of Nasiya Pope for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a non-emergency medical transport service. Sixty-four seven, oh.
So moved.
Second.
And properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Sixty-four seven three. Set the scope and topic for investigation into public allegations made by the Mobile, former Mobile Police Chief Paul Prime.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds.
There's an amendment based on our discussion this morning where we named the special counsel. As most everyone knows, Councilman Woods and I was tasked with putting forward some folks that were capable of conducting this sort of investigation. You may not want to hear it, but I'm going to read this entire resolution today for the general public to hear so they know precisely, you know, what we've outlined here. So if y'all will indulge me. This is sponsored by the City Council Committee of the Whole, and it says, whereas on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the Mobile City Council passed Resolution six zero dash three seven two, authorizing investigation into public allegations made by former Mobile Police Department Chief Paul Prime. And whereas that resolution appointed this council committee of the whole to direct said investigation, and whereas the council committee of the whole met on May seventh and May twenty-first of twenty twenty-four to discuss topics, including the scope and specific topics for any third-party outside special counsel to investigate. And whereas time being of the essence, the council committee of the whole has solicited and reviewed proposals for outside third-party attorneys licensed in the state of Alabama to conduct said investigation. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Mobile, Alabama as follows. Number one, there will be four basic factual areas for a third-party retained special counsel to investigate and report back to the committee whole on. A, the circumstances regarding the engagement of three-two-one Z insights by the City of Mobile, the City of Mobile Police Department, and/or the Gulf Coast Technology Center to conduct a review of the Echo Stop program, including how and why the contract for same was solicited and presented to the council and any internal or peer review as the same done by or at the request of GCTC. B, issues related to the chain of command at GCTC, often referred to as MPD cyber, and allegations that the chief of police was improperly cut out of or else unable to use GCTC resources. C, circumstance, the circumstances surrounding the alleged breakdown of relations between the city administration and Chief Prime on or about November twenty twenty-three and leading up to and including discussions between the city administration and Chief Prime on or about April twenty twenty-four regarding his proposed retirement or resignation. And D, any allegations made by Chief Prime that written grievances filed or submitted by him were not properly addressed or investigated. Number two, investigate, in investigating any and all of these factual areas, the special counsel shall only investigate those matters which if true would constitute illegal, unethical, or out-of-policy behavior. In doing so, the special counsel should in every instance and accord with best investigatory practices identify anyone who a) committed an alleged violation, b) precisely what the violation allegedly was, c) precisely what law, regulation, procedure, standard, or practice, or city policy was allegedly violated, and d) precisely when and where such alleged violation occurred. Number three, the special counsel's factual scope and remit is limited to the matters contained above in paragraphs one and two. Should the special counsel in the course of conducting its investigation uncover additional allegations or issues that do not fit within the scope of the investigation as described herein, the special counsel is not to pursue or report to the council any such allegations. The special counsel, however, consistent with its legal and ethical duties, shall separately report any such allegations or issues to the proper investigatory authorities, state or federal, in the event said allegations or issues would constitute illegal or unethical behavior. Number four, William Athanas, Mr. Athanas of the law firm Bradley Airant Bolt Cummings is hereby named as the special counsel to conduct the investigation described herein. Mr. Athanas will be compensated at a rate of five hundred seventy-five dollars per hour. Any partners from his firm shall be compensated at a rate of four hundred ninety dollars per hour, and any associate attorneys from his firm shall be compensated at a rate of three hundred ninety dollars per hour. Special counsel is also authorized within his reasonable discretion to incur such additional cost and hire such additional investigative or clerical personnel as may be necessary to properly conduct said investigation. Number five, attached hereto and incorporated by reference are documents comprising a summary of the special counsel's qualifications and experience, a conflict report of all prior interactions between the special counsel's law firm and the City of Mobile or entities reasonably associated with it, and the special counsel's engagement letter. Number six, the total budget inclusive of attorney's fees and costs for the investigation described herein shall be two hundred thousand dollars. The special counsel shall submit any and all bills for fees and costs to the city clerk's office with a copy to counsel for the city council. Number seven, the investigation and written report of the special counsel shall be completed and submitted to the committee of the whole within forty-five days of the adoption of this resolution. If for any reason at any time within that forty-five day period, either the budget or timeline for the investigation and report turns out to be inadequate in the opinion of the special counsel, he shall inform the city council attorney immediately so that the council may be advised of same and take additional action if warranted. Number eight, in the event any subpoenas under Alabama Code Section eleven forty-four C eighty-seven or other applicable authority are necessary in the opinion of the special counsel, special counsel shall forward the names and/or any necessary identifying information for the subpoenas to counsel for the city council, who shall forward same to the council and cause said matters to be placed on the next available city council agenda for approval. As you read that last one, you'll see it's council spelled C-O-U-N-S-E-L and C-O-U-N-C-I-L. So with that, that is the amended version I'd like to offer for consideration, and I'd like to also draw everyone's attention to the fact that Councilman Woods and I, you know, we were tasked with this, putting someone forward who is capable of doing the job. We've done the best we could. We've gotten advice from our council attorney and many others in trying to make this as transparent as possible with somebody who's qualified. We think we've done a pretty good job. Although I know this, as we move through this, it's not going to satisfy everyone. There are still people who are not going to be satisfied by whatever the outcome is. So this is our effort to illustrate to the general public, restore confidence, and let them know that we're doing all that we can, try to get to the bottom of it, and I hope we can bring this to resolution sooner rather than later because our city needs to move on. Mr. President.
Mr. President, go ahead.
There's a motion on the floor. I'll second it.
I thought it was a discussion.
Yes, Mr. President.
There's a motion on the floor.
No, we had a motion to second.
Oh, we got a second?
Yes.
Yeah, discussion. I'm going to ask the artist to please cease from talking. Mr. Daze and Mr. Carroll.
I just, just a couple of typos there, Mr. Reynolds. On the last page, the second sentence where it says, copy to council for the city council, that should be an aye. And the same on the second to the last sentence, council for the city council, that should be an aye also.
You got that, Mr. Linder?
I do, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. President, also just a couple clerical things to be sure. I'm not reading it, but first of all, the, a committee cannot sponsor a resolution. Only the council can. Individual names need to be listed as a sponsor of this. And then secondly, we should be responding to the council and not the committee. So those corrections need to be made also.
It's sponsored by the council.
When I heard him read it, he said.
He read it, said he counsels.
Well, okay, he read it. He kept saying committee of the whole. Okay. All right. As long as we have those corrections, I'm fine with it.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Woods.
Just in my short time sitting here, I've come to learn that you can't make everybody happy. Is this going to make everybody happy? No. Is it going to make most people happy? I don't know. But what I can tell you is, I appreciate, Mr. Linder, I appreciate, Mr. Reynolds, undertaking and trying to find the right person to do this, a true third party. I do not believe that we could have been any more clear found to anybody else outside of Bradley here. I think this is, this, obviously, the request was made. People, people asked for an investigation, things we've looked into. So really, end of the day, how this all came about was, I'm very confident, and I'm also very, stand very strongly that we did our best and due diligence to find somebody that can independently come in here and take a look at these and then also stay within the scope so that, you know, we can, we don't get down rabbit trails, but we get, we get things addressed and we also get a report within forty-five days. So I just want to echo what Mr. Reynolds says. I think this is about as independent as you can get. So, thank you.
Another discussion.
Yes, Mr. President.
Oh, on the amendment. Another discussion on amendment.
Oh.
On the amendment, right now.
Amendment.
No. Oh, okay.
Okay, all in favor on amendment?
Aye.
All opposed? Going back to the original discussion, Vice President.
Yes, just very briefly, I do want to thank both our council members, Reynolds and Woods, for doing such a good job with this. I know it was time-consuming, and y'all really took up the mantle and moved forward with it quickly, and just to really appreciate all that you did along with our council attorney, Michael Linder. So thank you for putting this forward, and I too look forward to just moving forward with this in a timely manner so that we can get the answers that everyone wants to see. So, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Daze.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I think as everybody knows, I voted, I was opposed to launching this investigation for the simple reason that I think it's, we're going to spend a lot of time and money and end up, as far as the community is concerned, in the same place we are today. People that are adherents of former Chief Prime will continue to be adherents of former Chief Prime, and people that are opposed will continue to be opposed. However, I want to thank Councilman Reynolds and Woods for the work they did locating an attorney for us, and I think that this resolution that we have before us, if we're going to have it, if we're going to launch an investigation, then this resolution is the way to do it. So I'll be voting for it.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds.
I want to make sure that the general public and everyone in the administration or whoever knows about this conflict review that was conducted for the Bradley Airant firm, and I'm going to read it so that it's abundantly clear to everyone. This was written to our city council attorney at the request of Councilman Woods and I to conduct a very thorough conflict review. It says, we appreciate your request that Bradley Airant Bolt Cummings LLP provide further information regarding its prior representation or lack thereof of the City of Mobile and certain related boards and commissions as defined below. As you requested, I am writing to confirm several points based on review of available records. As a threshold matter, please note that Bradley does not currently represent the City of Mobile or any of the individuals or entities identified below. In addition, the current Bradley lawyers who will be working on this matter have never represented the City of Mobile or any of the individuals or entities identified below. Number one, Bradley does not currently represent and has not represented in the past any of the following individuals or entities. A, William Sandy Stimson. B, Gulf Trading LLC. C, James Barber. D, Rob Lasky. E, Ricardo Woods. F, Paul Prime. G, Mobile Airport Authority. H, Mobile Planning Commission. I, Metropolitan Planning Commission. J, any of the boards and commissions appointed by the council listed on the City of Mobile organizational chart dated January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four and contained on the city's website. Number two, Bradley lawyers, other than those who will be involved in this matter, have in the past but do not currently represent any of the following entities, dates represented, representation ended. A, Mobile Education Building Authority, October nineteen eighty-four. B, Mobile Community Development Authority, March of nineteen ninety. C, City of Mobile Solid Waste Authority, June of nineteen ninety-three. D, Public Building Authority of the City of Mobile, March nineteen ninety-four. E, City of Mobile, October of nineteen ninety-six. Mobile Area Water and Sewer Commission, March of two thousand six. Mobile Airport Authority, February of two thousand seven. Mobile Housing Authority, April of two thousand eight. Number three, Bradley considers the Industrial Development Board of the City of Mobile to be an entity legally separate and distinct from the City of Mobile. Please note that Bradley previously represented that entity on two separate matters. The firm's work on the most recent of those matters ended in April of nineteen ninety-eight, and none of the lawyers who would work on this engagement had any involvement in those matters. Please let me know if you need any additional information sincerely, Bill Athanas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another discussion.
I would like to piggyback behind several of my colleagues in saying that this report, this investigation, rather, is not going to please everybody. If I had to tell you one more time on the third row, you will be exited out of this meeting. This investigation would not be, would not please everybody just as well the Kenya Brown report. Pretty much, first of all, I'm going to thank several of my colleagues, Councilman Carroll, for introducing this, and I went ahead and co-sponsored with him, because, you know, many citizens have doubts, have questions, have concerns, and this is, investigation is one way to help to heal and, you know, some of those concerns and questions and et cetera that's out there, you know? And so pretty much, I tasked along with Councilman Carroll to bring this resolution before the council. During the Kenya Brown report, I heard several things out there, that the report was biased. The report was done by a Democrat because Democrats controlled the White House. I heard that, you know, you know, this report was doing, you know, particularly individual like Trump, et cetera. So I say I wanted to try to make this as non-biased as possible. So, you know, two African-Americans, you know, sponsoring the resolution, I said I was tasked to Caucasian, and gentlemen, not to leave you out, you know, at all, but to go ahead and bring in someone that is non-biased. And so I do thank Councilman Reynolds and Councilman Woods for going out and looking for a firm that is non-biased as possible for the citizens can restore trust back into its government. This is the only way. Is it going to please everybody? No. But I do pray that it please majority of it, and I do pray that this investigation go quickly, smoothly as possible with facts, facts for just for the citizens to know that their government is working for them. Again, thank you, Councilman Carroll. Thank you, Councilman Woods, and thank you, Councilman Reynolds. Another discussions.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced, eighty-eight zero thirty-six.
By council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Consent resolution is being introduced, thirty-one four seven four through sixty-four eighty-five.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Thirty-one four seven four. Authorized the mayor to apply, accept, and receive a grant from the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals for Capacity Building Disaster Grant, no local match. Forty-four seven five, four seven six, four seven nine are declaring structures public nuisance and ordering them demolished. Forty-four eighty and four eighty-one are fixing cost for demolition of structures. Sixty-four eighty-two, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five are determining appropriations to ACF Metro Mobile Chefs and Cooks Association, Trinity Gardens, Falcons Athletics, Gulf Coast Caribbean Carnival Association, Lexington Homeowners Association, and serve a public purpose and approve payment.
I think, I think on four eighty and four eighty-one, they're, they need to be pulled out separately.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Forty-four seven seven declare the structure at five fifty-seven Dalton Island Park where a public nuisance is ordered demolished.
Motion table.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Out on the table.
Forty-four seven eight declare the structure at ten fifty-three Rotterdam Street or public nuisance and order it demolished.
Move to lay over thirty days.
Second.
That was sixty.
Sixty. Move to lay over sixty days.
Second.
The second in the discussion?
Yeah.
In the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll lay it off for sixty days.
Forty-four eighty fix the cost of demolition, and forty-one fix the cost for demolition of structure at eleven oh seven and eleven oh nine Spring Hill Avenue and eleven eleven Spring Hill Avenue.
Take four eighty-one with it too, also, please. She did, she did. Uh, motion to lay over thirty days.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll lay it off for thirty days.
CIP resolutions being introduced, twenty-one four eighty-six.
By council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced, zero eight four eighty-seven through sixty-five hundred.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of thirty-one dash four nine nine, with the rest being laid over for one week.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Thirty-one four nine nine authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive a grant to the Alabama Department of Transportation for fiscal year twenty twenty-five transportation alternatives. Set aside program grant, two hundred thousand dollars local match requirement.
Moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Announcements.
Uh, District Six, Councilman Woods.
I know announcements today.
District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Um, yes, Mr. President. This weekend, there's a lot going on, June first, uh, and I guess each agenda, in particular, council member has their own announcements. Uh, uh, this weekend, I will be in attendance at the Community Lawn Festival at Prince Peace Church. Uh, I understand that there's crawfish and live music, but on that Sunday, uh, I will be in the dunking booth myself. If you guys want to come out and spend a few quarters or a few dollars and try to sink me in the water, I would, uh, welcome the appreciation for the support of the community. So bring your dollar bills out and take a chance at sinking me. Believe me, I, I will tighten up the screws on that thing. I don't want to get too slow. But, uh, please come out and, uh, enjoy the community activities, uh, as we support a good effort, uh, for a parish that does a lot in the community out there. Uh, secondly, I was with the mayor last Friday, and I don't know if he wanted to make this announcement, but a nod about the, uh, uh, the ribbon cutting at, uh, Beenville Square. It was a tremendously, tremendously nice event, uh, tremendously nicely planned. Uh, I want to congratulate everyone that took the time and effort to actually get this together and make it look as nice as it does. It's a very nice, uh, public park for everyone to enjoy. And I would ask all of you in the city to take some time and get by and, uh, take a good look at it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. District Five, Councilman Days. Uh, District One, Councilman, uh, Pen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. On June the first, we will have our District One Rally Promoting Peace at John L. LaFlore Stadium. Starts at nine AM. We have live music speakers. So we invite everyone to come out, come be a part of promoting peace, the District One Rally. Um, also, I'm really excited about the overpass, um, on Ocelot Road, um, unification. We've got a lot of great projects taking place in District One. That's one of the, a, a partnership between private, public, um, and government, and as well as St. Stevens. We've got a lot of great things taking place. Um, remember, I'm District One, you're District One, and we're District One. One of the great quotes that, um, I, I stand by is that never become so much of an expert that you stop gaining expertise. View life as a continuous learning experience. So our goal is to continue to learn and continue to grow. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Pen. District Four, Councilman Reynolds. Uh, Councilman Reynolds, um, between you and Ricardo, y'all can have a good time on Sunday dumping William in that dunking booth, you know?
I imagine there's gonna be a huge crowd.
Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, uh, coming Saturday, I will be joining the members of the Friendship Missionary Baptist Church in bringing greetings to their pastor-elect. Uh, they have been doing a search for some time, uh, for their new pastor, and they have found someone. He is pastor-elect Reverend Tremaine Benson. I will be there at eleven o'clock to bring greetings and welcome him officially to the city of Mobile. That's it.
Uh, thank you, Vice President, and, uh, I will also will be joining you on Sunday, uh, also, I mean, Saturday. Saturday, Saturday, not Sunday, Saturday, uh, also, uh, to come out there, bring greetings. And, uh, also this past Wednesday, I had an opportunity to go to Palmer Pillins Middle School. They had a crossing over, uh, ceremony for the eighth graders, uh, which is heading to high school, uh, B.C. Rain, and, um, and also Williamson High School. So congratulations to those, uh, fifth graders. I was the guest speaker on last Wednesday. And also on this coming Saturday, which is a busy, very busy Saturday, um, the, uh, National Legal Cities, uh, they are on the road, and they will be in Mobile, um, at the Heritage House, which is in Platteville, from four to five, uh, PM. And, uh, ask them, you know, my colleagues if they are available, and also some, you know, citizens, you know, uh, please come, you know, come out to the Heritage House on, uh, Saturday and show some Mobile love and everything. Uh, anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
And properly moving second in another discussion. And we do have a committee meeting at one o'clock. Okay? One, one o'clock? Is it two o'clock? One, one o'clock. Okay, one o'clock. All, okay, all in favor? All opposed? This meeting is adjourned.